Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ralph Williams and I'm a fourth year student at the Academy of Health Sciences at Prince George's Community College, the first middle college program in the states of Maryland, Virginia, and the District of Columbia. As a fourth year student, I'm duly enrolled in high school and college courses. I will receive my high school diploma the morning of May 23rd and then receive my associate's degree in health sciences that same evening. I have successfully completed my high school requirements and I am finishing up my last 19 college credits. I have made the dean's list each semester and I'm happy to share that I've maintained a GPA of a 4.1. I have recently been inducted into the National Honors Society and I am currently enrolled in college honors courses. The Academy of Health Sciences is noted for its rigorous accelerated academic program. All my high school and college classes are strategically designed to develop and infuse responsibility and integrity into the student. We are also supported by the presence of academic coaches, summer bridge programs, pre-college orientation, tutoring and writing centers, faculty mentoring programs, and an incredibly supportive principal, Dr. Kathy Rashar Andrews. My long-term goal is to pursue a career in anesthesiology. In addition to allowing me to obtain an associate's degree, this program has given me a head start towards my bachelor's degree. This is very beneficial because my associate's degree comes at no cost to me or my parents and gives me an advantage on my journey to fulfill my life's goal. It has also allowed me to experience the rigors of college life in a very supportive environment before I step out on my own. Earning a degree is challenging enough on its own, so I'm very fortunate to have such a wonderful support system and an encouraging family at home. I'm a proud student of the Academy of Health Sciences at Prince George's Community College and I'm ready for the next steps towards my future. Now I want to welcome you to the September 6, 2018 Board of Education meeting. Highlights this evening will include news break, "Prince George's Education: All Adds Up." Additionally, under the consent agenda, the Board of Education will adopt the following proclamations: World Space Week, National Day of Writing, and Read for the Record. Please continue to check www.pgcps.org for the upcoming Board of Education meeting and other important community events. And now, the September 6th Board of Education meeting will begin. Welcome.
Good evening and welcome to the September 6, 2018 Board Meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. I would like to once again thank Mr. Ralph Williams IV, 12th grade student at the Academy of Health Sciences, for the introduction to the board meeting this evening. Before we begin, I would like to ask everyone to turn off any wireless communication devices as they interfere with the microphones and taping of the meeting. We'll have Ms. Ms. U. Banks, can you lead us in board prayer?
Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Tate, can you do roll call, please?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Ms. Ahmed.
Here.
Ms. Boston.
Present.
Mr. Burrows.
Present.
Ms. U. Banks.
Present.
Ms. Hernandez.
Present.
Mr. Murray.
Present.
Ms. Page. Ms. Quinteros-Grady.
Present.
Mr. Valentine.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Present.
Ms. Williams.
Present.
Dr. Wiseman.
Present.
Dr. U. Banks.
Thank you, Ms. Tate. So colleagues, prior to the start of tonight's meeting, items 4.1 through 4.3 were removed from the agenda. We want to provide the board and the public more time to review those items, so that's why they were pulled. Colleagues, may I have a motion to adopt the September 6, 2018 Board Meeting Agenda as amended?
So moved, seconded?
It has been properly moved and seconded that the September 6, 2018 Board Meeting Agenda be adopted as amended. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it and the board meeting agenda is adopted. Colleagues, may I have a motion to approve the August 26, 2018 Board Minute Meetings? So, I'm sorry, minutes?
One second.
Okay. It was properly moved and seconded that the August 23, 2018 Board Meeting Minutes be approved. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it and the minutes are approved. We will now have a news break in title, "Prince George's Education: All Adds Up."
It's the first day of school here in Prince George's County and it's all about the numbers. We have one brand-new school at Tulip Grove, we have 17 renovated buildings, 1,000 brand-new teachers, and the most important number of all, over 134,000 new students coming through the doors. All those numbers will add up to what we hope will be a wonderful new school year. Whether they were singing the Swahili words for welcome, hugging their school's mascot, riding their bikes, or showing off their backpacks, the students at the new Tulip Grove Elementary, some of whom had been at a temporary facility for five years, could hardly contain their excitement on the first day. I like your shirt, there's no place like home, new building, same magic. Sylvia, are you feeling the magic this morning?
Uh, a little bit because I love this school. It's so big and so amazing and so big and so amazing, I can't just speak of it.
You look like you're gonna fly right away.
I'm so excited.
Are you really? I can tell.
I'm like out of 10 right now.
And for the adults who oohed and aught at the spanking new building, with its multimedia room, sun-splashed media center, and live plants growing on the walls, the first day euphoria matched that of the kids and then some.
I'm excited. I know parents are excited to get their kids out of their homes and back into teaching and learning. Our staff has been preparing for a week now to receive them and so, we're glad it's the first day.
I have been all over PG County, it feels like, dropped my daughter off to school, dropped my son off for his first day at Northview, said good morning, I love you, and I'm here today to support Tulip Grove and to work.
When I drove out of my driveway and I saw the first school bus driving down my neighborhood street, I got excited and giddy just seeing the kids walking to the bus stop this morning. So it's always exciting, a new start, a fresh beginning, you know, the summers are fun but they're long and we're ready to, we're ready to get started again.
For Principal Jamie Coffin, who long dreamed of this first day, the reality was decidedly emotional.
I had to hold back tears this morning when the fifth graders walked in. It was kind of emotional because they were in kindergarten when they left and then they were at the swing space with us and then they got to come back and I just, I had to hold back tears as they walked in because it just was such a great moment.
From the kindergartners in Ms. Cressis' class at Tulip Grove who carefully and proudly colored in their names, to the eighth graders at Golson Middle School who used a deck of cards to better understand integers and were helped by interim CEO Monica Golson herself, a former math teacher, the emphasis on day one was on getting back into the swing of school and, as it always should be, planning for success.
I was excited, but now I'm kinda nervous to be here in general.
Why's that?
It's nice. Oh, because I feel like it's been a while since I've been gone and like new teachers, new students.
And here you are on the first day of school and the whole head of the school system, Dr. Golson, this is her first day on the job, would you like to have had her as a full-time teacher, do you think?
Yes, yes.
The great thing is, is that what you saw there was prior planning and all of our teachers do that to make sure the students have an amazing educational experience.
Absolutely. And I asked two of the students if they would like you as their regular teacher and they said yes. They said she really knew what she was talking about.
Well, good. What's most important is that the students think I was great because they're the ones who have to judge us at the end of the day.
Despite some understandable jitters, the sum total on the first day of school was one of familiarity. Witness the wide-eyed students at Wise High School having lunch with CEO Golson as she shared memories of when she was the school's principal. The body language showed it was a relaxed conversation, like sitting down with a member of the family. Could you sense that she was really comfortable with you guys?
Yes. And it kinda eased my nerves a little bit, how cordial she was and how easy it was to talk to her, it made me feel a little better about it.
For Prince George's graduates, like Daniel Swan and his wife, whose young children are now following in their footsteps, they're part of an equation that has long equaled Prince George's pride. This is, you're Prince Georgians through and through. Did you get a good education here in Prince George's County? Is Sebastian getting a good education?
I got a, I'm a, I got a PhD, so I'm a doctor now, so it didn't-
I say so.
Thank you, yeah. And he's, it's been great. His reading exploded since he got into kindergarten here, so it's been awesome. Yeah, and she's a Maryland grad, so we all-
University of Maryland grad, Eleanor Roosevelt grad, grew up in Prince George's County myself, yeah, so, great education.
The Swan's son Sebastian, new to Tulip Grove, will likely follow in his parents' distinguished wake, but for now, like a lot of kids on the first day, recreation trumps the three Rs. What's your favorite subject?
Going to the playground.
You're a normal kid, I like that. So it's not so hard to figure out the attraction of Prince George's schools. Numbers may tell the story, like the extra $3 million just given to upgrade technology, but so too do the strong bonds that often make a Prince George's education a family tradition. There's no math needed to measure that kind of love of learning.
That was really nice. It was good, it was exciting, first day of school. So, okay, I'm gonna give my report, this is the vice chair's report. School has begun and we are all geared up for a great year. On Tuesday, we welcomed back over 133,000 students to Prince George's County Public Schools. I had the pleasure of accompanying the chief executive officer, Dr. Monica Golson, to the Mullikens Bus Lot, G. James Golson Middle School, and District Heights Elementary. In addition, I visited six schools, Core Rice, Highland Park, Concord, and Francis Scott Key's Elementary. It was enlightening to see so many students eager to return to school. I am confident this school year will be momentous. As we embark upon a new school year, we encourage students to have and maintain great attendance. Every day a student is in a classroom is an opportunity to learn. September is Attendance Awareness Month and every year, the Office of Pupil Personnel Services and schools across the district promote the importance of daily attendance. Please visit the Prince George's County Schools website for resources on attendance awareness and remember, engagement equals attendance. Colleagues, as we bid a fond farewell well to Mrs. Roach at our August 23, 2018 Board Meeting, she was not present for a presentation acknowledging her accomplishments during her tenure on the board. So we would like to take this opportunity today to acknowledge Mrs. Roach, who led the Academic Achievement Committee in a successful effort to create Board Policy 1100 Community Schools. Mrs. Roach brought a wealth of experience and passion for the work we do to advance students, student achievement in Prince George's County Public Schools. Colleagues, please join me in presenting this plaque of appreciation for Mrs. Roach's hard work and dedication that has significantly impacted the Prince George's Public Schools. It says, Mary Roach, Board Member at Large, February 2016 to July 2018. Thank you for your tireless efforts and unwavering support of students, staff, and constituents of Prince George's County. The Foundation for Reform in Prince George's County Public Schools is attributable to your dedication and commitment to improving education and ensuring equitable access to quality instructions for all students. Respectfully, Sigun U. Banks, Board Chair, Monica Golson, Interim Chief Executive Officer. Thank you. Sure. Want to take some pictures? We got somebody to take some pictures?
I just wanna really do, do a really short thank you to everyone here. It's just been an honor to serve and I just wanna do a couple shout-outs. First, to my board colleagues, it's been an absolute honor to serve with you. It's even been a bonus to get, make some great friendships out of this, so I didn't expect that and that's, that's been amazing. You know, what we know is that this job is so demanding, both personally and professionally, and I see how much each and every one of you cares and how hard you work on behalf of our kids and families, so just thank you for everything you do. And to the administration, thank you for being such great partners. And Dr. Golson, I'm excited for the future of the school system under your leadership. And to the community, thank you for being such fierce advocates for our kids and for always pushing us to be better and we need your continued voice and collaboration. And I guess my, my one wish going forward for us as a community is to just stay united, stay united by our common love and dreams for our kids and so that together we can help give them what they need to pursue their dreams. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary, we're gonna miss you. So colleagues, at this time, I would ask that you all join me in honoring the memory of lives well-lived and well-loved. Francis Pratt, bus attendant at Crossland Bus Lot. Sidney Clark, bus driver at Mulliken Bus Lot. Carolyn Kaderer, paraprofessional, Oxon Hill Elementary School. And Senator John McCain, a national hero. Please join me in a moment of silence to remember these impactful and meaningful lives. Thank you. So there's upcoming announcements. September 13, 2018, at 6:00 PM, we have a CIP public hearing, will be right here, did this, be here in Sassa building? September 18, 2018, at 1:00 PM, we will have a board meeting, that will be our public board meeting, this is an early meeting. September 22, 2018, at 8:00 AM, we will be having a Passport to Success Expo, and I'm pretty sure a lot of you have gotten some information about that. And what that is, this, this fall, the Board of Education and the Department of Family and Community, I'm sorry, new name, Department of Family and School Partnerships have joined efforts and combined two very innovative and informative events. The College and Career Readiness Summit and the Family Institute Conference entitled Passport to, Passport to Success Expo. This event will provide parents and students of Prince George's County Public Schools an opportunity to learn how to navigate the Prince George's County system through interactive workshops and exhibits. There will be over 35 universities and colleges represented and some schools will even provide onsite admissions. In addition, there will also be local government agencies, businesses, and trade schools, as well as police, fire, and EMS representatives for students seeking careers after high school. The Passport to Success Expo is a free event and will be held at Oxon Hill High School from 8:00 AM until 2:00 PM. This year, we will, this year, we will provide breakfast, transportation, childcare, and a host of resources. Don't miss out, please visit our website for more information and online registration to this wonderful event. Persons interested in speaking at meetings of the board must register using an online registration tool found on the PGCPS website under the Board tab, click the Quick Links, click the Quick Links tab that reads Public Participation in Board Meetings and Hearings. Registrations are taken on a first-come, first-served basis, starting four business days prior to the scheduled meeting up until two and a half hours prior to the meeting's scheduled start time. For more information, call 301-952-6115. This concludes my vice chair's remark. I will now yield the floor to Dr. Golson for the interim chief executive officer's report.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome back to our students, staff, and family members for the 2018-2019 school year. I started the very first day of school at the Mulliken Bus Lot, greeting our bus drivers and staff at the bus lot, preparing our students for their journey for the day. I want to thank parents, community members, and elected officials who came out on the very first day of school to help to greet our students and our families. Thank you to US Senator Chris Van Hollen, Congressman Anthony Brown, County Executive Rashern Baker, State's Attorney and future county exec Angela Alsobrooks, board members Williams, Burrows, Grady, Wallace, Carolyn Boston, and Sigun U. Banks for joining me on the very first day. I also want to give a special thank you to our student board member, Amaniya Page, and also Bryce Owano, who led the tour at Parkdale High School and did an amazing job. And lastly, want to give a special thank you to our PGCEA president, Teresa Dudley, for also joining me the entire day. At the end of each day, our team reflects and determines what we need to make our staff, students, and parents' educational experience better. And while conducting site visits on the very first day, I asked our associate superintendents to identify issues related to air conditioning in our schools due to the increased temperatures. Even though building services worked over the summer to address air conditioning and HVAC issues over the district, we still identified 42 sites on the very first day with AC-related issues by 5:30 PM. Two of those sites had no AC, while the other sites had a few classrooms and/or the multipurpose room did not have AC. Our schools navigated those issues by relocating students to other portions of the building and we truly appreciate them being flexible and enduring that weather on the very first day. But due to the large number of sites that had partial air and the production of a heat index of 105, a decision was made to have a two-hour early dismissal on yesterday. Even though our HVAC staff and external vendors worked until 11:00 PM on Tuesday night, got up and started working again at 5:00 AM on Wednesday morning, and worked into the wee hours on Wednesday, I still made a decision Tuesday night to inform parents so that appropriate provisions could be made to ensure our students were picked up and secure after early dismissal. I made sure that we didn't make a last-minute decision. Every situation will not afford us that type of opportunity, but this one did. The majority of our Tuesday AC issues were resolved on Wednesday and we addressed an additional 10 concerns related by AC just last night. Please make no mistake, we will continue to do all we can to ensure that our buildings are operating as best as we can, however, the truth is, is that this is a Band-Aid to a much larger issue. Until we seriously create a plan to finance a solution to our infrastructure needs, this cycle of crisis management will continue. This is not the first time that you have heard this from me, I shared it when I served in the role as chief operation officer. We have a $2 billion maintenance backlog with many issues resulting in an aging infrastructure. We have a plan for an $8 billion school modernization and construction plan that will run over the next 20 years, but it has to be financed. I want to personally thank our building services staff, our external vendors, Sam Stefanelle, Mark Fausset, and Wesley Watts for working tirelessly, tirelessly into the night to ensure that we got our buildings up and running so we could have a full day today. I understand that I have been charged to make decisions that are not always favorable, but as stated before, I must always consider the health and well-being of our staff and our students. In addition to assessing air condition on the very first day, we also looked at other areas of concern and that other area was transportation. We noticed that we had a large number of issues into our transportation call line concerning our buses. So I then decided to call the hotline myself to see how long parents had to wait. And the wait time was longer than I would expect a parent to hold. I then received the report on the first day to determine a volume of calls that we received. And on the very first day, we had 5,026 calls reported into our call line. 4,118 of those calls were abandoned, that means that the parent, the person on the line decided to hang up. I was one of those 4,118 because I was on hold for a while and decided to hang up myself. 908 calls were answered. Please note, we do have two shifts of employees that answer that call. I personally went to the call center the very next day so I could witness the work of our employees. We have two shifts of 15 employees who work from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM to take the calls. I witnessed them taking calls from our parents and logging in their concerns so that we could address them. And after visiting the site, came up with a plan that I thought could help to reduce the volume of calls so that we could meet the needs of our community members. And so, a communication will go out to our community, one asking that if you have a request to change a bus stop, we will be asking them to send that in an email request. So, because it requires that our team actually physically go out to that bus stop to review the request, to determine if we're able to accommodate what they've asked for. We also received a large number of calls about the Here Comes the Bus app, which is a new app that we implemented for this school year. So we have created a dedicated email address for parents to contact so that they can get their questions asked, and an IT staff member will assist in responding to those. I believe by directing some of those calls to email where we will be more responsive will help our call center to be able to respond to the many calls that come in. We do realize that during the first week of school, buses are sometimes late, and we want to try to accommodate the requests of our parents and some of our students who called the line as well looking for their buses. I want to thank our parents for their patience. This is a priority issue for me, and we'll continue to seek ways to improve our customer service and responsiveness. In addition, during the last Board of Education meeting, parents shared the concern that only one of our immersion schools had access to MyYon, which is an online digital literacy library. I'm pleased to announce that we're able to fund not just that one school, but all five immersion elementary schools: Capitol Heights, Overlook, PE Williams, Paint Branch, and Caesar Chavez. We already had done that in the FY19 budget request, so I wanted to make sure that I provided that information tonight. And lastly, it's always good to start off the school year with good news and a reminder of why we do the work we do. So I wanted to share the story about one of our students from Charles Herbert Flowers High School, senior Namdi Olivero, who earned his private pilot license over the summer through the New Air Force Initiative. He was one of only 120 Air Force junior ROTC candidates to be accepted into the program, and there were out of more than 750 applicants worldwide. So please, let's take this opportunity to congratulate Namdi. Thank you once again for an amazing opening of school. We know it was not completely 100% perfect, but for 133,000 students out of 134 who had an amazing school day on the very first day, that wasn't too bad. So thank you. This concludes my announcement.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. Okay. So colleagues, we have eleven registered public comment speakers this afternoon. But it's going to be something a little different, but I will share that as we get to that part. Okay, speakers, I need to make this announcement first. You have been registered to speak in a public comment form where the Board of Education will listen to your comments. The board will not address your comments. You must speak on the topic for which you have been registered. All registered speakers will have three minutes to make their presentation. At the sound of the buzzer, speakers may complete that sentence only. Registered speakers may not relinquish any part of their speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. Speakers may not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. You will be warned once. If you continue, your comments will be terminated. Speakers are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, principal, CEO, deputy superintendent, etc. Please leave a copy of your statement in the file box located next to the microphone. Your hearings to these guidelines will enable the public participation process to move smoothly. So our first speaker is on registered, is a public speaker on Agenda Items 5.2. And it's the Honorable Denny Traveris. Is she here? Okay. Lindsey Wright. Okay. Michael Kravitz.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Mike Kravitz. I'm the PTO president at Benjamin Philloy Creative and Performing Arts Academy in Morningside. And I'm here tonight, excuse me, to speak about capital improvements, which, of course, is a first reader for you tonight, but does not mention Benjamin Philloy anywhere in it. So before I say that, I would like to first briefly thank Mr. Burrows, Mr. Wallace, for coming out to PTO meetings in the spring, hearing parents and teacher concerns about this, that, and the other, including drinking water. So, Dr. Golson, thank you for taking quick action to provide safe drinking water for our children educators around the county. But with that in mind, I'd like to turn back to capital improvements for a second. Did you know that at Benjamin Philloy, we do not have an auditorium? A performing arts school without a performing arts venue. Instead, we have a fairly dangerous stage in our gymnasium, which requires a patchwork of microphones, lights, and other audiovisual equipment to support our creative arts majors in their various performances: dance, drama, band, choir, orchestra, piano, not to mention our visual arts and media students, who also use that space, and that's on top of routine school functions. It's like a STEM school not having a science lab, or a big sports school not having a stadium for their teams to play. Apparently, in the past, there was, there were plans for such an auditorium, but the plans were scrapped and the budgeting removed altogether. But I want to turn back to the safety now, and I'll tell you why. In order to make our patchwork space work for our students, significant time and manpower is required to prepare performance stage setups and tear it down. And the result is some loose wires, haphazardly placed equipment. And in fact, we had a teacher trip and fall and injure himself when setting up one of our performances last year. And he's doing fine now, but it could have been avoided altogether if we actually had a dedicated space for the creative arts school. And I understand there's always competing priorities for budgets, and certainly there are schools around this county who have pressing matters to take care of. But I would like us to recognize these deficiencies and establish, and in some cases reestablish, budgeting priorities and light items to remedy them. For Philloy and the families I represent, this means pulling out these old plans. And hopefully, I'm asking you at this time now to amend the capital improvements plan to include a line item for an auditorium at Philloy. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Todd Ledbetter.
Good evening. My name is Todd Ledbetter. My wife and I have been parents in Prince George's County Schools since moving to Laurel from DC in 2006. We currently have a son in seventh grade at Robert Goddard Montessori and an eleventh grade son at Laurel High School, where he plays defensive end on the Laurel Spartans varsity football team. Laurel is the oldest high school in the county, and it shows. There are many examples I could point to, but I will focus my remarks on the condition of the football field and facilities. Our football field at Laurel is in marginal condition at best. It is unevenly graded, full of bare spots and weeds. As a result, drainages pour and sections can become dangerously slippery when wet. A new track was just installed, but why do the track without doing the field at the same time? This is a waste of time, effort, and money. The bleachers are also in poor repair, haven't been painted in years. People are so scared to sit on them because they're afraid of splinters. During spring practice, my son cut himself on a broken section of fence. Lack of maintenance and attention to the stadium could lead to a more serious injury, something nobody wants. The JV team lockers are currently housed in a ramshackle trailer. There's no air conditioning, so in the extreme heat of the summer, the kids were forced to run in and out to get their equipment as quickly as possible from a trailer whose interior temperature was probably in excess of 100 degrees. With all the attention on heat-related injuries in the wake of the tragic death of Jordan McNair at the University of Maryland in June, this is a dangerous situation that cannot be tolerated. My household is paying over $10,000 a year in combined city and county taxes, and no, we don't live in a mansion. When my son goes to play at other schools in the county and surrounding jurisdictions with lights, dirt fields, upgraded facilities, he asks me why things are the way they are at Laurel. I don't have an answer for him. So I'm here on his behalf and the fellow student athletes and his fellow student athletes to urge the board to find the resources to upgrade the athletic facilities at Laurel High School as soon as possible. Last week, I posted a video on YouTube documenting the conditions I have described. I will do everything I can to galvanize the Laurel community around this issue and hold Prince George's County Schools and the other responsible officials and stakeholders accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. So we are now on non-agenda items. We have something a little different. Like I said earlier, we have some Girl Scouts here. And it looks like it's one, two, three, four, five of them. And between two registered speakers, they have six minutes. So they're going to divide their six minutes between the five of them to speak. And because they're kids, we're going to let them do this because I think it's some type of badge. So we're going to allow those five students to come up, the Girl Scouts, and do their presentation. So will you give them six minutes? Thanks.
Good evening. Hi, everyone. My name is Leila Brown, and I am a ninth grader at Parkdale High School. I am a Girl Scout. I'm a senior.
Hello. My name is Allison. I am a ninth grader at Parkdale High School as well, and I am a Girl Scout senior.
Hello. My name is Julia. I am an eighth grader at Green Belt Middle School, and I am a Girl Scout cadet.
Hello. My name's Nadia. I am an eighth grader at Dora Kennedy French Immersion, and I am a cadet.
Hi. I'm Lillian Glarus, and I'm an eighth grader at Green Belt Middle School, and I am a cadet. We're Girl Scout Troop 6892 in Riverdale Park. We're here because we're worried about children and teens struggling with mental health issues in our schools. So because of this issue, we made a petition for the sole purpose of having health classes further the awareness of mental illness disorders not caused by substance abuse.
Our troop chose this topic because we have friends that have mental illnesses, like depression, ADHD, and anxiety disorders. I myself have heard how some of my friends have struggled with people not understanding what their mental illness actually was or how to help. So we created this petition on their behalf so that they can get the help they deserve and need. We've researched that.
The National Alliance on Mental Illness says that 50% of students aged 14 and older with a mental illness drop out of high school.
Also, 20% of youth ages 13 through 18 live with a mental health condition, and 8% of youth have an anxiety disorder.
We hope that the Board of Education will take action on this topic by creating a unit in the health curriculum that is just for mental health. This unit should be taught to grades three and up because understanding of mental health is important to kids. We created an online petition to ask for support on this initiative and received 315 signatures. We want every school to have a full-time nurse, and we want annual assemblies to focus on behavioral health. This could include a showing of the movie Angst. It is critical that kids get the help they need to stop these tragedies.
We hope you realize how important this is and how it can benefit students' lives in our country, county. Thank you.
And wow, they did that in just a little bit over three minutes. Awesome. Love it. Okay, our next speaker is Belinda Queen.
Greetings, Madam Vice Chair, to the board members, interns, CEO, and most importantly, teachers, staffs, and parents, and any students in the present. Thank you for this opportunity to express my concerns to Prince George's County Public Schools in regard to safety and social and economic justice. What should social justice mean to you? I'll tell you what it should mean: that everyone deserves equal economic, political, and social right opportunities. Prince George's County Public Schools must embrace this concept so that human rights are manifest in the everyday lives of people at every level of society. Yes, we need to fix the funds. We also need to make sure that each student, regardless of race, or socioeconomic status, or gender, or other characteristics, is enjoying the same socioeconomic and political right and treatment in each school and at each class, whether it's the air condition, whether it's the football field that was talked about, whether it was the stage, whether it's mental health as discussed, whether it's the comfort of the seat, the clean and newer environments, the update of the new building, as you just showed at some schools. How can we expect our students to feel economically safe in classrooms that are decaying, that are deteriorating, and schools that could not and are not safe haven, and they are not equipped? This is not creating a peaceful learning environment emotionally or physically. What positive learning environment have we created by covering up for years and not working together to ensure that we fixed many of these issues over this summer? My five-year-old granddaughter this evening called me and said, Grandma, the ceiling was leaking at my school today. When I asked her, was it in her classroom, she told me it was the cafeteria. I apologized to her, and I ensured her that I am sure her principal, Ms. Bennett, is working on that leak in the building for your safety at John Bayne Elementary School. Safety doesn't just come from bullying, from guns for intruder, but sometimes it's inside environmental problems and issues that all need to be addressed. Material listed things and buildings have decayed over the years. Some schools and some materials are 10, 20, 30, 40, and 60 years old, just rotten. As elected and important and appointed and selected leaders, I urge you to work together with the parents, the community leaders, teachers, and staff so that we can ensure that the funds are fixed, so that every child is getting an equal and quality education. Come outside the boardrooms, come outside the office, your chairs, and learn to be outside-of-the-box thinkers. Learn to work together with business, unions, and trades. And let's all stop fighting and work together in Annapolis and Upper Marlowe to ensure that each dollar that is needed per the Thornton and Currie Commission is not only provided, but extra is given and available. So I go to the bottom in closing. I demand that we do better. And let's all put kids first for the change, and I just want to say thank you unto Madam CEO for your honest and transparent report. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Dudley.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak this evening on behalf of the 10,000 educators in Prince George's County. My name is Teresa Mitchell Dudley, and I have been serving as president for the past three years. And I have to say that I want to thank Dr. Golson for inviting me to participate in the first day of school activities with you. It was just a skin-tingling experience to stand there with her and Angela Alsobrooks, and just to see three mothers who really care about Prince George's County standing strong to make sure that we can make this a better place. And I want to thank you for that invitation. I also want to thank you for your concerns about the children. When I used my very, I've never had to use it before, my negotiated request to have District Heights closed several years ago, it was ignored. And as soon as you came onboard, you realized there were issues and moved the children. And I also want to thank you for that, for those staff and those children, because the schools that our children are sitting in are the same ones that our educators are teaching in. So thank you for that. I also want to thank you for the AC and giving everyone the two hours early yesterday. I also want to thank you for the AC and giving everyone the two hours early yesterday. I think that it's important that educators came out and stood and appreciated what you did. So we're on the right path on a lot of good things. However, we have things from previously that we've just got to deal with. Our educators were there the first day of school, no question. We were there, we were ready, the classrooms were ready. However, we're still four steps behind when we look in at Oracle. And we love our children, but we are, we've got to do something about compensation, and I will continue to come and address that publicly because that's what people are really concerned about, and I understand that we have to deal with that. So I'm going to go rapid-fire here because I got a lot to talk about. Number one, we need to continue our work on restorative practices and restorative justice. We need to continue our work on community schools. We want to be clear that the negotiated agreement is honored with respect to planning time, and I'm going to send this electronically to you so you don't have to keep notes, okay? The, we want to make sure that the grading policy changes are reviewed because there was a lot of concern about the three grades per subject for the elementary school teachers and the workload there. And we want to make sure that we keep focused on the adverse childhood experiences and how that's impacting our children. Mental health is a big issue, and when you have those adverse childhood experiences, it's difficult. We also need to make sure that we're looking at our, I'm almost done, Madam Chair.
Ms. Senate.
The human resources reform to allow educators to look at in-house vacancies when they become available. There was a lot of concern about that. Nobody knew where the vacancies were. And the last thing, when we're talking about the CIP, I'm going to take my president hat off for a second.
Make it fast, Ms. Chair.
One second. Is, I live in Kentland, in Landover. Kentland Elementary School has been vacant for years. Columbia Park Elementary School is way over capacity. The kids are in trailers in the back. Dodge Park Elementary School is over capacity.
Ms. Dudley, I'm going to have to ask you to come back in another.
I'm going to come back. I just want to make sure, because tonight's your first reader, so, Ms. Eubanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Robin Polite.
Good evening, ladies, gentlemen, board members, executives, and Dr. Golson. My name is Robin Polite, and I'm a school registrar and the clerical chapter chair for Local Twenty-two Fifty. I've come before you this evening with the hopes of receiving support for the working conditions of our school-based clericals concerning the ratio of clericals being adequate in every school, whereas we are already frustrated and exhausted for fulfilling other clericals, nurses, or parent engagement duties that assist with the ESOL population and student records compliance concerning the ongoing microfeminine process. For starters, as I sat on the contract negotiation team, it was agreed that the committee would begin to review the ratio of clericals in October to make sure vacancies are filled every academic year, and if the ratio isn't adequate or is adequate in every school, then it is, and was also understood that someone will hold the principals accountable, accountable for compensating clericals as stated in the overtime side letter, which have not been released in the memorandum as stated in our contract. Unfortunately, as clericals began the twenty nineteen, the twenty nineteen school year, we were already overwhelmed with the microfeminine process, like I said, due to the grade changings or prior and current duties from leadership or understaffing of clericals that actually began ten to fifteen years ago, when clericals were shifted among schools from fully-staffed schools to understaffed schools, which are still understaffed today. As much as clericals want and have supported student records with the microfeminine process, we simply cannot start a new year without compensation. And we know that money is not everything, but for a lot of us clericals, we have gone over and beyond for years with doing things after work and not getting paid. And so we hope that we can get the support on that. We also hope that you can review and revise the hours and the times of registrations and so forth. We just like you have off in August, and the ISCO office don't do registration in July. We have to look at things a little differently to support us because we figure if we can do registration enrollments like half a day, another half, we can get our other work done, or maybe on Fridays, there is no enrollment or registration time, so we can get extra, you know, the work done that we have to do if possible. You can review that as well. Also, it's very important that when it comes to the parent engagement staff, I think is what their title is, they are very supportive with helping us with the ESOL population. And so a lot of us clericals feel that it is really a sin, I'm going to use that word, to not have a Spanish person, a bilingual person in the building for those schools that have an ESOL program, because when it comes to registration and enrollments, they are supportive to what we have to do. Language link takes too long, forty-five minutes to almost an hour. So we ask that you support us in those areas this year.
Thank you. You leave a copy of your?
I'm, it's scribbled, so I'm going to actually type it up, and then I can, can I email it to the board?
You can email it to us, yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Annette Jones.
Good evening to board members, our CEO. I'd like to make a comment and also voice a concern. I need to commend our CEO and her team for her brilliance, the transparency, and the deliberate leadership that you have brought to our county. You see, when things go wrong, we complain, and when things are looking up, we need to let you know what you're doing. I commend you for the swiftness you and your team have taken. So I'm proud, and I'm here to say, well, at the end of next school year, we want to say what Prince George's look like and sound like, because I feel it in my spirit that it won't be the same, and I want to thank you. Things will not be perfect, and I have a complaint regarding the grading policy. As an elementary school teacher, it is very burdensome and challenging when we had two grades, much more three. As a self-contained classroom teacher, we teach social studies, math, reading, science, reading, oral communication. Three grades, that's challenging. According to Prince George's County, we are to teach with rigor, and we must grade also with rigor. So it's very challenging to do all of that per week because we want to teach. Please do not take that away from us. So I'm going to urge you and ask you, along with your wonderful team, to revisit the grading policy where it specifically affects our elementary school teachers. I think it's okay for the high and the middle school, but when it comes to the elementary school teachers, particularly those who are self-contained, it's challenging. And I don't, I don't think it is your intention to put that strain on us right now. So I'd appreciate you if you revisit it, twist and turn it a little bit to make our life a little bit more exciting for us, and I thank you and appreciate you. Thank you.
So our last speaker for tonight, Delores Milhouse.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come to speak before you, interim Dr. Golson, interim CEO, Dr. Golson, and co-chair or vice chair on Boston. I have been here, I feel like Groundhog Day, continuously talking about the same thing over and over again. So I'm here with thanks. I'm here with appreciation. I am here with now a third grader in one of the prominent language immersion programs in Prince George's County, and I want you to understand the word that I use, prominent, because I'm also here about how we talk about who we are and what we do. Our language immersion programs are excelling. Our programs across the district are excelling. We are doing a wonderful job. You will have my son come out and many other students come out to share with you how they're speaking fluently now in their second language. I myself am a English speaker, day and night. And I felt the burden of visiting France a week ago, and I had a roadblock in many of my interactions with individuals that I met. I can speak un poquito español, so I asked them, you know, parle-vous español? And they looked at me like, okay. But what I do know is I felt joy in my spirit and my heart because the work that I'm doing and I have been doing, that I'm committed to doing, I will continue to do so my child and other children will not have that same roadblock. So I commend you and appreciate what you've done. I ask you to continue to support our expansion request for middle school and high school. You continue to see that there's a waitlist. We're excited. We are bringing in different activities. I just created a, well, not created, but I worked with the school to have a garden built. I'm not a greenery type of person, but the kids will be learning not only the socioeconomic benefits of it, but entrepreneurship and speaking and learning, and I'm partnering with so many different people so they can see how good we are. So I want us to remember, we have challenges. We have a ways to go, but it's actually right over the horizon. And I see it, I feel it, I know other people are saying that they feel it, so my spirit is overjoyed, I'm excited, I'm anxious, I'm nervous, but I'm ready for this school year. I thank you for the transparency. I want to cry, but I'm not going to, because what's important is our children need us, and we got to do this together. And I have been everywhere telling people from the governorship to the county executive, we are a team, and together we can do this as one unit so we can talk about everything bad that's happening, but we have a lot of good news to share. So thank you. Let's change the story, change the narrative, and we are great, so let's operate under the umbrella, umbrella of excellence. Thank you.
Yeah, she made me feel a little warm, and made me want to cry. So that would take us to the four-point-oh consent agenda. I will now yield the floor to Dr. Golson for introduction of items four-point-four to four-point-seven under the consent agenda.
Items four-point-four through four-point-seven requires board approval for a request for emergency replacement of a large meteor vault at Annapolis Road Academy, an approval of proclamations commemorating World Space Week, National Day of Writing, and Read for the Record Day.
Okay, colleagues, may I have a motion to approve items four-point-four to four-point-seven under consent agenda? Okay, it has been properly moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve items four-point-four to four-point-seven under consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Aye. The ayes have it, and items four-point-four to four-point-seven under consent agenda has been approved. So that'll take us to new business, this is five-point-oh, first readers. I will now yield the floor to Dr. Golson for introduction of items five-point-one to five-point-three under new business. First reader.
Items five-point-one through five-point-three require board approval as first readers.
Colleagues may have a motion to approve items five-point-one to five-point-three under new business, first reader agenda?
Motion to approve five oh one.
Is that you, Curtis?
I'll wait for my colleagues to introduce their motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay. So it has been properly moved and seconded that the Board of Education approves items five-point-one to five-point-three under the, under the new business first reader agenda. And since this is a first reader, you don't need a discussion, I assume, but if anyone's willing to have any. All right, Mr. Burrows.
My question's about the special education staffing plan. Dr. Mason, you know, last year, you know, we talked about the special education staffing plan, and, you know, there was an issue in the schools with the ratio. I went to a school today, and I saw thirty-seven students in a class, Algebra II class, and the teacher told me that there were like twelve kids with IEPs, and she said, you know, what am I supposed to do? And so I wonder, could you shed some light about how this staffing plan will help alleviate some of the concerns that we're hearing in the schools about special education caseload and ratios and the like?
Well, thank you again, Dr., Mr. Burrows, again, for your support around special education and your advocacy, and for the question that you've raised tonight about how the staffing plan will help to address the questions that you've heard, maybe particularly at the secondary level. So one of the things that I'd like to begin with is that the Department of Special Education last year conducted a very deep analysis of the utilization of our special education staff allocated to all of our high schools and our middle schools. At that time, Dr. Golson was our deputy superintendent for the Division of Teaching and Learning, and she supported us in this effort. And I recall in one of the previous board meetings, she talked about the fact that we did discover during our audit, there were instances in which the allocation of special education teachers may not have always been utilized according to the proposed plan recommended by the Department of Special Education. So we've now sent guidance to all of our principals to make sure, first and foremost, that the allocation of special education teachers is utilized as they should be, because number one, many of them are grant-funded positions, and you have a requirement to ensure that when positions are allocated based upon IDA grant funds, that those funds are being utilized to provide direct support to students with disabilities. So we've done an analysis, again, at the high school level and at the middle school level. We have right now about thirteen middle schools that we've just completed an analysis on from last spring, again, looking at how they utilize their staffing. And I happened to go to one of our high schools this year and talk with a scheduler who had some questions around staffing. Now, I will tell you that you would expect in a traditional co-taught class, and that's an example of when you see about twelve special ed students in a general education class like Algebra, to be in that type of environment, but you would also expect there to be a general education teacher and a special education teacher. Our guidance to our principals has been, first, make certain that in those core content subject areas that are associated with the park assessments, that there are special ed teachers and, of course, the general education teacher providing that support. So I can drill down and talk to you later about which particular school, we can go in and take a look at their utilization of their staff. But I will also say that I believe that our findings have, in fact, yielded some positive direction for our principals and for our schedulers to recognize the significance of making certain that our special education teachers are, in fact, assigned to classes based upon the recommendations in our staffing plan.
Thank you, and I do appreciate you being so willing to work with the community, I mean, and the advocates, and really anyone who approaches you. You've been absolutely phenomenal in this post of yours.
Thank you.
I would be interested, maybe in, maybe October, November, having a listening session with you and maybe some of our special education teachers, just to make sure that, you know, we're hearing the same concerns and address them to the best of our ability. I think we could find certain themes in that that could help inform our work. My work as a board member and your work as, you know, the chief of Student Services and Special Ed, it sounds like Ms. Grady will also join in on that session as well.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Murray.
Thank you. My first questions are around special education. Do we know how many special education teacher vacancies we have right now across the system?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. And so how are those students being serviced currently?
So the Director of Special Education, Trinell Bowman, has a list of each and every one of the schools where there's a vacancy, and when there's a vacancy, she develops a support plan for each and every one of those particular schools. You always expect there to be a substitute teacher, though, in those particular classes, and that does not fall into an area of noncompliance, because special education has been, as you very well know, an area where there's always been a critical shortage in more recent years. And so as long as there's a substitute teacher who's getting support from persons with expertise... And so, as long as there's a substitute teacher who's getting support from persons with expertise in the field of special education, we are, in fact, complying with our special education regulations. But Ms. Bowman takes it very seriously. I reviewed that list, actually, today, and that list indicates very specifically where the vacancies are and the support plan for each and every one of those particular schools.
Okay. How about for speech pathologists or occupational therapists? Do you know those numbers?
Well, I will tell you that we've been working rather progressively around our speech and language vacancies. When I arrived in the district in two thousand fifteen, I discovered that we had a tremendous number of vacancies, to the extent that I felt very uncomfortable, that there were schools where children were actually not receiving their speech-language services, and we had to come up with compensatory services plans. But I want you to know, Mr. Murray, that special education consults with the Honorable Dr. Robert Pasternak, who's responsible for the reauthorization of IDEA. And he and I discussed, along with Trinell Bowman, our concerns in the area of speech and language. And so, over a year ago, he introduced us to a phenomenal organization called DotCom Therapy. It's a teletherapy process for providing speech and language services, and an organization that was founded by speech-language pathologists, because all throughout the nation, there are just significant concerns around vacancies in the area of speech. We became very excited about piloting this, and I shared this with Dr. Gosin, when she, of course, at that time was in a different capacity, to tell her about what we were beginning ready to embark upon, and that I did not want any child in Prince George's County not to have access to speech and language services. So, I want to be very clear with you that we have, we have our FTEs through our permanent positions, we have contractual physical bodies, but now, we have even a far more sophisticated mechanism where there's actual teletherapy. So, in front of, like, your computer that you're looking at now, your speech and language pathologist would be working directly with you. We piloted it last year at three schools, Duval High School, Potomac Landing Elementary School, and also at C. Elizabeth Reeg. We discovered that the utilization of that model would not work at a school like C. Elizabeth Reeg with the population, but it was dynamic at Duval and dynamic at Potomac Landing. So, we are continuing with DotCom Therapy, and we hope that as a part of being able to share more about special education, we can show you what that looks like. Well, we conducted a meeting with all of our parents, invited them out to learn about the pilot that we were going to do, as well as they had the opportunity to meet that actual therapist face-to-face, so that when the parents and the schools actually had a chance to see the therapist, it was astonishing that, as one little kid said, "Oh, that's you." You know, this is the therapist that I work with each and every day. So, we have really worked hard to address that area. We have not experienced the magnitude of vacancies, though, in occupational therapy. So, I just want you to know that we're working progressively to really come up with exceptional models to address our speech-language needs. And finally, this summer, for the first time, we conducted a compensatory services speech-language camp. We utilized contractual therapists, we also utilized DotCom Therapy, and that was very successful. And that compensated those families whose children did not get services.
Awesome. I'm really excited to hear about
Yes, we are too.
Those developments in speech services.
Thank you.
Back to the special education teacher vacancies. You know, I understand that we're in compliance and that those classrooms have substitutes. Are we pursuing expanded partnerships with any alternative teacher certification programs? I mean, I know that a lot of times, those programs are able to find certified people and train them. In special education, I mean, it is no secret that it is a high-demand, growing area, and the supply isn't always there. So, are we exploring those options? Because it pains me to think about a caseload of fifteen times, you know, twenty-one vacancies, three hundred-some students across the school system who are already at risk, in a sense, in that they have an IEP and, and do not have a certified individual in front of them. So, are we looking at alternative programs to fill some of those vacancies?
Well, I believe that that's one of the things that we would love to be able to do, to look at exceptional ways of how to either grow our own special education teachers. I know in some jurisdictions, they have programs where paraprofessionals who have an interest in furthering their education, that there oftentimes partnerships created for them to develop their own skills in that area, so they can continue to work in the district. So, that is a goal that I would like to really work on rather progressively.
Yeah, so we, so we, that is, that is a really great thought. So, we don't have anything right now around paraprofessionals?
I'm currently not aware of that, and I, I did have a structure like that in another jurisdiction, and I had a partnership at that time with John Hopkins University, as well as with the Adventist College in Tacoma Park. And my paraprofessionals had an opportunity to go in, continue to work in our district, but take courses, so that they could become certified in the field of special ed. So, there are lots of ways that we can perhaps grow within our own professional, you know, colleagues.
Yeah, I, I would love for you to look into that further.
Okay, thank you.
That sounds like a phenomenal idea. Does our resident teacher program, I assume they probably place some special educators? Do we have, I mean, is there any way that we can place a greater emphasis in that program to try to recruit people into that background?
They actually do recruit in the high-needs areas, but what we can do is get the statistics on how many, where they're going when they're placed in the resident principal program.
Gotcha. Thank you. And the last question around special education, can you just speak generally to the district's philosophy around least restrictive environment?
Thank you so much for bringing up that question, because I want to let the board know that for the first time in the history of Prince George's County, where we have historically had the lowest number of students in the general education environment among all of our local educational agencies in the state, that we have actually exceeded the state target for the first time this year. We're at sixty-nine point five percent. Now, to be very honest, that's the official data, but Trinell Bowman and I keep real-time data, and we're really at seventy-one percent where we stand. The federal target is eighty percent. When I got here, we were at fifty-five percent. And there's a direct correlation between giving students greater access to the general education environment, like that Algebra II class that you just talked about, and then seeing a correlation between performance outcomes. But we have a goal that we need to continue to work toward and achieve, and I'm proud of the work that's been done in the last three years to enable our district to move forward. We are progressively more educating our students in the general education environment. They need access to the rigor, they need access to teachers who have knowledge in the content areas, and special education teachers who can support them in those environments. So, that's really great news for Prince George's County, that we have finally reached that particular place. That is our goal, and we're going to continue to work towards achieving the ultimate goal of eighty percent. If you look at the MSDE report card on special education, you will see where we have exceeded the largest school district now in the state of Maryland, in terms of the percentage of students in LRE-A, and that's the general education environment.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very excited to hear that. As a special educator myself, I think that is of great concern. I'm sure you're probably already tracked by school now, but I would definitely urge you to, to look at schools that are performing on the lower end of that spectrum, because, yeah, oftentimes, I think we can do those students great harm, just reverting quickly to pulling them out all the time, taking them away from, like you said, the rigor of the curriculum, the interaction with their peers, and the general education teachers. So, I'm happy to hear that, and hopefully, we'll continue to hear that that number is increasing, so.
It will increase, and we have tracked those schools. We have all the data for every high school, every middle school, and every elementary school. So, that's how we've been able to move it forward, because we use that data to target where we needed to change the service delivery model. So, thank you as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Ahmed?
Ms. Boston, are we specific to special education at this moment?
These items that's on here?
All three of them.
From one point, one to one point three, because we, we really not supposed to have, this is a first reader, but we're just going to allow it to hap- happen.
Okay. Well, I'll keep my remarks specific to some of the follow-up items I'd like to see for the next board meeting, as these come up as second readers. Dr. Gosin, I sent you and your team, just literally, probably, two and a half hours ago, kind of a list of my thoughts and questions, as it related to several of these items, but I want to make it known and clear for the record, some of the follow-up items that I would love to see as we go into second reader. Dr. Mason, I, I want to thank you for all the work that you do. You've just been incredibly understanding and responsive when it comes to the special education needs of, of my community and the, the ways that I have reached out to you. For me, when it comes to special education, special needs, there's not a week that goes by that someone doesn't reach out to me and say, "My child's IEP is not being met," or "My child's not receiving the services that I think they need," or "How do I navigate this process?" And I want to thank you for your help in that, but I do know that it's not just in my community and in my district, it's across the board. And so, my question is, what data is being collected to ensure that we're satisfactorily serving the special needs students and families in PGCPS? Are we, are we surveying? Are we doing dissatisfaction tracking? Is any of that happening, or what's, what's the landscape as of now?
Okay, again, thank you also. We, in fact, have to, on a annual basis, as a part of the federal requirement, ensure that our parents complete a survey. Our survey rate, however, is not a very, very high turnover rate. It does not reflect the greater percentage that we would love to see happen in our district. Our survey response rate falls between about ten to eleven percent, and we constantly try to provide every opportunity to make sure that our parents have that way of reporting their findings and feelings about special education, you know, within our district. We also continue to conduct our special education citizen advisory meetings on a monthly basis, which also provides a forum for parents to come and to discuss, you know, their concerns. And then, on a weekly basis, Department of Special Education reviews every complaint, whether it's a formal complaint from a parent that goes to the Maryland State Department of Education, or a complaint that might come through a board member, or a principal, or teacher, an advocate, whatever that source is, we're going to review those particular complaints. So, we do have multiple sources for the level of concerns that may exist. So, I do have quantifiable data, and I have it by each board member's district, so I do know where there may be patterns, where there are schools that we need to focus on and provide more support, and I also know where things work very, very well. But our parent community is very aware that they can reach out to me directly, to Trinell Bowman directly, if they have concerns.
Could we see that data? Or at least, for me speaking, I would love to see, for my district, how that looks like and how I can best support you and your efforts and your role.
Sure, I can put together a report. Dr. Gosin was aware last year, when I believe it was Mr. Burrows who asked about, "How do we collect and analyze how we're monitoring?" And I, I replicate a process in Prince George's County that replicates a process used at the Maryland State Department of Education for analyzing each and every complaint that we receive, and those meetings are every week. So, we can provide data, we can do that on a quarterly basis, or however the board desires.
Ms. Tate, could we mark that as a follow-up item? Thank you. I also think it would be really helpful for me visually to see kind of the plan of action in addressing some of the shortfalls in special education and special needs that we have with our system, just to put things in perspective of, okay, we know where we're at and we know where we're moving forward. That would be very helpful for me as well. Thank you, Dr. Mason, thank you, Dr. Gosin.
Thank you.
When it comes to CIP, I just have one big thing. One big thing. I was looking through all the CIP documents on board docs, and I came to the one that had the chart that laid out all the different projects that we have. And my one big question, as I was looking through this document, was, how are we, in the, the projects that we have listed, how are we addressing the biggest major concern as it relates to capital improvement in our county? And that major concern for me, and I think for, for everyone on this board, is the overcrowding in North County that we have.
So, Ms. Ahmed, in the, in the document, if you go to the last couple pages in the document, you'll see that the major projects and modernizations, there's a couple of them that are in the north or, or inside the Beltway, William Worth, New Glen Ridge, and New Adelphi. This is an area where we have a lot of, we need a lot of seats in the middle schools in the north end of the county. So, these three buildings, one is a replacement, two are new buildings, will, will provide extra seats in the north end of the county. What you don't see here is work that, that the director has, has mentioned before about the P3, about bringing a P3 forward with a number of new schools, and several of those schools will be proposed to be built in the north as well.
Dr. Watts, I think what would be helpful for me is if you could break that down into details, figures, and numbers for the next meeting.
Certainly.
I, I definitely think when it comes to the middle schools and the elementary schools, that's great. I'm, I'm very concerned about the high schools
Yes, ma'am.
And how we're going to handle what we project to be really high enrollment numbers in the north. So,
We'll bring the plan back.
Just to put that in perspective. Thank you. And then, with maintenance, Dr. Watts, there's just a lot of thoughts that I have about maintenance, and I listed out several questions that you, you can probably get from Dr. Gosin, but I, just to, the gist of the concerns there is just understanding better the budget implications of maintenance, better understanding what professional development and training is being offered, better understanding, are we using, are, are we leasing shop sites, and are we best utilizing those leased shop sites and those, whatever equipment we have? Those are just a couple of my concerns and questions around maintenance, but I would love to get some follow-up on those questions at the next meeting. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Yu Banks?
Hi, I know this is a first reader, but I wanted to talk about it, even, we're talking about special education and staffing implications, but we can't leave out another large part, which is the mental health. I know we all, we see it all the time, I'm hearing it all the time, and it's really, it kind of made me chuckle, because Ms. Dudley talked about ACE, and the, the children came up talking about it as well. And that's what I want to make sure that we, as a system, have on the front of our minds, because these children need help. It's very close to my heart. People who know me, who know my story, know why, because I was a child that needed help, and there was no help there. And with the help of God and my faith, that's how I overcome. But I, we need to be there for our children, so as a system, I want to find out some things. I was looking around at neighboring jurisdictions, and I'm, I'm just going to read what I have here. Baltimore City has approximately fifty-nine thousand children, but they have a hundred and sixty-eight school psychologists. We here have a hundred and thirty-four thousand, but we only have ninety-one. A lot of our psychologists have to work for, for different schools. And how can we reach those who need us the most if we don't have what it is we need? So, I just, I just want to put that on everyone's mind. Montgomery County has a hundred and sixty-three, they have a hundred and sixty-three thousand. In Montgomery County, they have a hundred and twenty. Howard County has fifty-five thousand, and they have seventy. So, I know we're behind, and I know nationally, it's a problem, but I just wanted to, to bring it out and talk about it, because it's, I've been talking about it the last week. It's like the elephant in the room. Everybody knows about it, but nobody's talking about it. So, I want to talk about it and, and put it on the first, on the front of our minds, so that we can make some changes in the system to make it better, not just for the students, but for our teachers as well. Because people are dealing with some very serious issues, and we want to be proactive instead of always having to be reactive. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Yu Banks. Ms. Quintero's Grady?
I just, thank you so much, Dr. Mason, for taking the time to answer our questions. Just, I think, as I reviewed the document and discussed with my colleagues, the big question, or sort of trying to gain understanding, is around just, and I think Ms. Ahmed touched on this, was sort of the survey around the satisfaction of service for the parents. And part of it, for me, is around that there seems to be a disconnect, what I interpret or observe, around what the parents often know or don't know and understand, and their frustration around how to navigate, you know, the tool of the IEP and understanding the proactiveness that has to be there on their end, and that there's an ongoing communication that has to take place and advocacy, honestly, so that there's, there's engagement on their part, their parents, to ensure that so that there's, there's engagement on their part, their parents, to ensure that, that the, the, the student, uh, really gets the, the required, um, support in order for them to be successful academically. So, I know that, you know, training is important, and I think part of, um, a, the plan, or what I'm gonna probably dive into the next go-around, would be around the early intervention piece, because how, how do we get our teachers to, like, if that's not their area of expertise, what are the things that we're doing so that we're able to sort of, um, be able to, to, to alert a parent, um, and to sort of start giving tools earlier on, um, so that as they progress, it gets a lot more challenging for a young, for, for a student to, it, with the stages of adolescence, the embarrassment, the different things around learning, not wanting to read, not wanting to be called out, whatever the learning, uh, disability may be. So, I, I do wanna, you know, that piece around the early intervention, and then, um, the other pieces, we all know, most of us understand how difficult it can be to navigate, um, understanding IEPs, and it, it can be complicated, and, and, you know, in our role, there's compliance piece. The ratio around, or I know that when teachers have come before us, what I've gotten feedbacks about the amount of time that it takes to keep up with the paperwork, and as it relates to being also with the student. And so, that, and I'm just sort of giving a, an update of some, so, these are pieces, because it, it goes back to how do we focus on the child and making sure they have the proper supports and time, and the teachers also being in compliance. Um, and third, just because we, we do understand how difficult this tool can be to navigate or to understand, um, the IEP and 504, the language barrier can even add to that. Um, I, I get emails in Spanish, and obviously it's because I speak Spanish, but they don't you, they don't even have to be from my district, I think there's a level of comfort there. Um, and oftentimes, I just, I'm trying to understand what is it they're saying, and what's the frustration? Um, and so, I, I'm wondering, what are we doing to be proactive too? And I think, uh, Mr. Murray touched upon this around, when we're looking to recruit teachers that are coming in, um, also being able to pay attention to the bilingual, staffing bilingual, and I, I even think twenty-two fifty, someone spoke around even the clerks, but I think all those things are supports, um, that help in a better environment around, um, for the teachers and the students and, and the parents as a whole. So, I just, I think it was more comments, um, as it relates to me wanting to follow up in the second go. Thank you.
Thank you. It's okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Wallace?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Couple of questions, and I'll start with, um, it seems to be the, the agenda topic at the forefront of a lot of our minds is the special education staffing. Um, and I just have a request of follow-up, not so much questions to answer tonight, but if you could provide some clarity, Dr. Mason, it would be appreciated, but if it's in writing, appreciate it as well. Um, I'm, I'm, read the report, I want to read it a little, again, a little bit deeper. Just wanted to get a, kind of, an understanding of the staffing, particularly around special education students and extracurricular activities, and how you, you may have a, a dedicated aide in some cases, but if that child wants to be involved in a, a program after school, or even a athletic team, um, how those staff members or volunteers in some cases can be, um, as big of assistance to those students as possible, um, and if the, the dedicated aide or professional development for other teachers needs to, uh, be conducted, and what that looks like in the school system. Uh, secondly, um, just wanted to get an update on the Sutland Elementary School Autism Program. I know that the, uh, closure of Skyline kind of, uh, split that program into three, I believe, with a lot of the students going to, over to Sutland, just to get a quick update on how that program's going. And finally, just to thank the administration, um, for, I guess, previous administration, but a lot of folks are, that are still here. The moving of the Deaf and Hardened Hearing Program that was at Andrew Jackson Academy, but I, I'm, I'm hearing that it's going well at its new location, and I'm, I'm glad for that move, because it was, it was, um, good times and some tough times, but some challenges that we are, we're still overcoming, but I'm, I'm very thankful, even though that program is no longer in District Seven, um, but it is still flourishing. Um, so, if you could just give me the update on, on Sutland and, and what we're doing around extracurricular activities now, or at a later time in follow-up, that'd be greatly appreciated.
In reference, well, thank you again. Uh, in reference to the, um, I'll start with the program at Sutland, um, we had the wonderful opportunity, when Skyline closed, to establish two sites in Sutland High, Sutland Elementary School was one of those sites. It was one of the smaller sites of the two elementary school sites that we chose, and I've always gotten reports back that things were going well. We assigned central office case managers the first year to be assigned to each and every one of the students, so that the family, as well as the principal and staff, would have support. To date, I haven't received any concerns from any of the parents from that community or my staff, but I'll do additional, uh, follow-up. Uh, we're starting a new year, just to see how things are, you know, getting off the ground, uh, there. And then, again, uh, Mr. Wallace, the first part of your, your question again, I want to make sure I answer that correctly.
It was just around the supports that the school system i- is giving and plans to give around extracurricular activities for our special education students.
Thank you again for restating that. So, we have an obligation, if a special ed student wishes to participate in extracurricular activities, to provide them with support. Uh, Trinell Bowman and I, uh, review each and every request for dedicated aides in our district, and we analyze, uh, what the needs are, and we then ultimately approve them based upon, uh, those particular needs. So, if a school, at a high school level, wants to have a child, let's say with autism, participate in an extracurricular activity, but they need support to navigate socially, we will fund that.
That's awesome to hear. Just the thought of, I, I hope it never happens in this school district or any school district that a child wants to be involved after school but is denied because of the supports that they receive in the daytime to learn, or not given when they want to explore other opportunities.
That's correct.
So, I'm, I'm thankful to hear that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And then, my question for the administration around the CIP, um, I don't think there's ever a time where, uh, the school, Sutland High School comes before me on paper that I don't have a question about it. If I could get a timeline of what the, uh, how the project is going, I know we've been having some community events, but just a good timeline of how the project is going. I know last year, the board requested funding from the county, I think about twelve, thirteen million dollars for that, for that project so far, but now I see it's zeroed out. And my, my concern is that it's being delayed, but I, I think that there was some conversation around, uh, public-private partnerships that could actually expedite the project. So, just get some clarity from the administration on that. I'll yield back.
Uh, do, do you want that, want them to get back with you on that?
If, if staff is ready tonight, I can certainly take that answer tonight.
Are they?
I know I kinda sprung it on them, sorry.
Are you?
I see my buddy, Ms. Chase, on, always ready. My Sutland High School partner.
If I, if I could request, Mr. Wallace, as it relates to the funding piece, if we can get that back to you in writing and in second reader, but it relates to the timeline, I think it's more inappropriate for us to talk through where we are in the project portion, if that's okay.
Uh, currently, there is a feasibility study being conducted for the, uh, for Sutland High School, try, when we're trying to determine, uh, exactly where, uh, or where the buildings will be placed and, uh, what sites. So, that's going on right now. Uh, we have not yet gotten the final feasibility study back from the architects, but that's ongoing, um, as far as the funding is concerned, uh, for that project. Um, the way, where it will be spent, um, there's money already in the budget for Sutland that's not yet been spent, so that's why it's, there's not a lot of money this year in the CIP.
So, the, the twelve million dollars from last year, that, that has yet to be spent?
All of it? No, no, all of it has not been spent.
Okay, perfect. Now, I yield back.
Mr. Valentine?
Thank you, um, and I'll be very brief. I want to touch on something my colleague, Mr. Burrows, brought up, and I do want to commend you, Mr. Burrows, since I've been on the board, this is the one issue that I think you've been championing up the whole entire time, and I appreciate your consistency. Um, and you have a personal story as well, so I appreciate that, just want to commend you publicly. Um, but I had deja vu. I was in eighth grade language, I teach at Oxon Hill Middle School my first year, did not have any education training at Morehouse College, but I had about seven or eight students who had IEPs in my class, I had one class that, the whole class had IEPs, uh, but I had a para who did travel with them, and some days she wasn't there. Um, in those days, I did, you know, struggle, um, but then, there were classes that had a few IEPs but no para. Uh, and so, we do have classroom teachers, first-year teachers, um, who are put in a, you know, a tough situation. Um, but a lot of our students who have IEPs, 504s, are being taught by teachers who are not, sort of, that's not their one thing they do. And so, my question, um, to be answered at our next meeting is one, um, professional development, um, around classroom teachers, um, and how they work with paras, how you work together in a classroom, it's not the same as doing on your own, um, but what support we're giving them, um, as well, especially our first-year teachers. If there's a way the principal can kinda be very conscious about that. The second question is around accountability, um, around implementing IEPs for charter schools. Um, that's something that we often hear about as well, and so, um, we can, you know, some we should have to do, bring someone from the charter office to talk about what level of accountability, um, that we are, you know, giving to charters to ensure that the IEPs are being met out. Um, there are past charters in this county, um, that have tried to cut back on, um, staffing around, around those, uh, specifically staff who work with special needs students. And so, what oversight do we have, particularly in, in that arena, um, as well? And so, professional development of non, sort of, specially, specialized teachers, but also around charter schools for our next meeting, I appreciate it.
Okay, I think, Mr. Murray, did you buzz in for round two?
Yes. So, thank, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Ms. Williams, did you? Can I let Ms. Williams go first, and then you, then you, you're first for second round two, and Mr. Burrows?
Thank you, thank you for all you do in this, um, in this area of, uh, special education. I think some of the, the stats that you gave about how we are increasing our service, I'm seeing that in the decrease in, um, concerns and questions. And I think the response that your office is giving in support of our parents' concerns is helping them to navigate the system much better, so I appreciate that. One of the things that was brought up earlier is about the, um, support in the classroom. And one of the things that I always try to pay attention to, especially in, in District Nine, is how we, um, in using our budgets in the school, our issue is not about cutting programs, it's about cutting bodies because of our, our, um, SBB dollars or programs that we get into our school system. So, how does, and I don't know if you can answer today, but maybe in our second reader, we can talk about how the special education grant and our school-based budget dollars, and in trying to get paras and supports in the classrooms for our students with, um, special needs, how is that working and correlating so that those schools that do not get as much support dollars as some schools because of their population, how are they able to fill those needs? Um, it's, it's always a challenge, and it, it concerns me when I hear my principal saying, you know, "I had, need to make a decision about, you know, where to cut a body in the building," which I, I don't like to hear. And I know that we will be talking about this as we continue our conversation about equity. Um, that includes all students, students of special needs, as students with economic, um, challenges, or students with, um, educational challenges. I know we will continue to have that con- conversation. But also, when you talk about, um, placing, and this is in our secondary schools, making those schedules for students, the challenge with, um, our guidance counselors, and in the Academic Achievement Committee, we're looking at the guidance counselor's schedule throughout the year to see how we can support them, um, how that is in effect also, because making those schedules, those guidance counselors, creating those schedules to make sure that you disperse those students, so you don't have twelve kids in Algebra II, you know, I think that that, that is also a challenge. So, as we, um, come back, I would like to hear, you know, comments about those three areas. The financial impacts, the, um, guidance, and how we can help support you in our decision as we're, we're making that, and also as we have, continue to have the equity conversation. I also would like to be included in that listening session, wherever you have it, you know, I will, um, make it. And I think it's great with the virtual therapy. That is amazing. I mean, now we're going to tele-medics, you know, you can actually see a doctor over the computer. So, having the ability to have the, um, therapy, especially speech therapy, via the computer with a live person, you know, that's much better than speaking into a mic and trying to get it right. Um, so, I think that would be, um, I think that's an amazing program, so I'm glad that we're launching it throughout the system. So, um, my next question i- is about, you know, my favorite subject, which is capital improvement and the capital maintenance program. Um, and our, my, my focus is really on the Stephen Decatur, and I'd like to, um, have a better understanding where we are with that development. Um, and, um, I believe we're doing a, a major renovation in that school. So, um, getting an update during second reader on that would be great. And, um, also the public-private partnership. I cannot, you know, thank you all enough for pushing that forward at the rate that you are, and where we're gonna be in a few years. It's gonna help us out with, you know, the overcrowding in the north, our aging schools in the south, and, um, I think in a couple years, we're gonna begin to see the, the transformation of Prince George's County Public Schools when it comes to our capital program. So, um, I look forward to diving into this more during our second reader. So, thank you.
So, okay, we have second round, so you know, the time is less. So, um, you know, if you can make your questions as short, and if there's something that they can come back with if you get to second reader, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms.
Then Ms., Mr. Murray, then Mr. Burrows.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. Um, for my second round, I wanted to talk about the capital improvement plan, um, particularly around, um, First High Point and then Laurel High School. Um, I have heard, um, a lot of complaints, um, over the years about the need to rebuild, um, High Point High School. And Dr. Golson, I was curious if you've been hearing those same, um, concerns in the community?
Yes, we've heard about, um, High Point High School when I served in the role of Chief of Operations, um, and that was probably about five or six years ago.
What are your thoughts, um, about the need to re- rebuild High Point?
So, as I, I stated earlier in my comments about the AC issue, we have a eight-billion-dollar plan for modernization, and High Point is one of the facilities that's part of that plan. Um, what we have to do as a school system, along with our elected officials, is determine ways that we can begin to finance that plan, so that we can begin the modernization of places such as High Point High School.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm looking at the lists, um, that are in the nearest term, in terms of priority, and, um, frankly, I'm shocked not to see, um, High Point on this list. Um, as you know, it's the only Title I high school, um, in Prince George's County. Um, it's a community that's often overlooked and really needs, um, help advocating, and, um, I think that's, that's our job here on the board. I think it's an issue of equity. Um, it's also the largest high school, um, in Prince George's County. Um, and so, I, I'm curious about your, your thoughts about what we can do to, to look at expediting High Point up this list.
So, what I would have to do is go back and look at our Master Plan Support Project, which we made a major investment in, in order, which helps to inform the order of which our projects are listed, to see where the New International High School was or would be in that plan in relation to High Point High School, um, and then determine where they would be, um, in the order. So, it could be just that High Point High School is on the next phase. Um, knowing that, though, we have been in Phase One of the Master Plan Support Project for a while, because we haven't been able to get funding. Um, but I would need to do, go back and do some research to see what our Master Plan Support Project looks like. We spent, we made a major investment in that, um, project, and had an external evaluator look at and assess every last one of our facilities and determine the educational adequacy of those buildings to help rank them and determine where they will be in the phase process. buildings to help rank them and determine where they will be in the phase process. So I just need to go back and look at that research.
Yeah, I would, I would appreciate that. And the last question on High Point, do you know roughly how many students International High School is slated to serve?
Yes, approximately 400.
Okay. I mean, as you know, I think, I'm not sure if High Point's crossed the 3,000 threshold in terms of students, but it's serving, you know, an extremely large quantity of students. It's busting at the seams for lack of a better term. And so for that reason and the others I've listed, we really urge your review of that before this comes to second reader.
No problem. I'll have that information before the next meeting.
Thank you. And colleagues, I just had a couple questions about Laurel High School. We, we had a speaker here tonight, and I've received many concerns from the Laurel community about a few different issues at Laurel, the air conditioning, the parking lot, the fields. I see that there's $9 million in the plan over the next six years countywide for parking lots. I want to know if any of that money is right now going to be reserved for Laurel High School's parking lot?
We'll go back and research to determine.
Well, Mary, we, we have a priority list, and what we'll do is we'll check that and see exactly where Laurel is on that list, and we'll get back to you.
Okay. Do you have any updates on, on the air conditioning? I know I've been corresponding since last spring about the air conditioning situation at Laurel, and as the year has started, I've received more concerns. My belief, if my memory serves me correctly, is that some units were supposed to be replaced over the summer. Do you have any update on the air conditioning situation at Laurel?
Yes, we, we did replace those units that we spoke with the principal about. We, the main office, I believe, the library, and one wing, multipurpose room. So that, that work was done this summer.
Great. Thank you very much. And my last question, I think I see that there's money reserved for Laurel Stadium in 2020. Can you speak to that?
Laurel, Laurel High School is the next school we have on FY20 to get a artificial turf field, a stadium. So they are next on, on our list. So we're hoping that that FY20 funding comes through, so we're able to do that.
Very glad to hear that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Burrows?
Well, Oxon Hill still doesn't have our light, so before you build the Laurel Stadium, we're going to need Oxon Hill to be taken care of.
Duly noted, sir.
Absolutely. But I do stand with my colleague when it comes to the High Point issue, High Point being the only Title I high school, large, ELL population, I think is worth looking into. So I appreciate you looking, you doing that. My, my next question is for the maintenance plan. And I understand it a little bit better now than I did a few days ago with how this air condition, this issue came up. You know, can you just talk about that initially? Like, how do we get here? And, and what can you tell the board to ensure that we're not here again? Because it didn't really seem acceptable, to, to be quite honest.
So, Mr. Burrows, as you know, we have, probably half of our buildings are over 40 years old, and many of our systems are aging. And if you just look in the CIP document alone, and look at the money that we've asked for, for just some of these projects, just HVAC on page two is 160 million dollars we're requesting over the next five years to replace some of these systems. Okay, so some of these systems are very expensive, and a building could cost 15 to 20 million to replace an entire air conditioning system. You have to remember that some of these buildings, we retrofitted a system in 40 years ago, they didn't have air, air, air conditioning. We put one in, and now it's broken down. And, and, you know, the technology's changed, you know, things have changed. We have to take those out. District Heights, we're spending two and a half million dollars on District Heights over, over this year to replace their air conditioning system. You know, and, and what's happening is, is we know these systems are breaking down and, and aging and rusting and, and pieces, and we're putting, we're, we're pushing them along to try to keep them going until we get the funding to replace them. So in a lot of cases, these systems break down multiple times over the course of a year.
No, I understand that. I guess my question is, could we not have a 24-hour maintenance crew before school started? Like, why do we have to wait in the middle of when school started?
So I, I think those are good questions. So what happens is, is over the summer, let's just say that it's a little lighter in the building, and we, we're only running the air conditioning in certain parts of the building. When we start adding 1,000 people into the building and we start turning on all these systems, things start happening. You know, body heat, all of those things play a role, the outside temperature. Even in our homes, when it gets to 90 degrees, 95 degrees, our own air conditions in our homes struggle to keep it at 74 degrees. And, you know, you go home at night and it's been running all day, and the temperature is 76 degrees, it can't get to 74 degrees. So, you know, a lot of those things are, that, that's what's happening in our schools right now.
And, and so what can we expect this winter? Like, we know now that there will be a winter, and it will be cold. So what are we doing now to make sure that we're not in the same crisis this upcoming winter?
So Sam, you want to kind of tell them how we, you know, transfer over?
And HVAC has been one of our biggest challenges. The, the biggest issue is we, it's very difficult to anticipate where we're going to have the failure, failures. We have teams that are out forcing preventative maintenance to try to extend the life of these systems, but quite frankly, there are four or five systems this year that we had to replace out of operating capital because they never made it to the point where they were funded in our CIP. So we're continuing to operate this, but we have a separate group of people working on heat. So we're starting right now, as we're working on air conditioning, we have a group of people, our, our boiler mechanics, out preparing for, for winter, so we can get out in front of that. But it is very difficult to anticipate where the failures, failures are going to be in such large systems.
How many vacancies do you have in maintenance?
Currently, right now, in that shop alone, I have three plumbing vacancies, which, which would affect the heating part of it. And we've advertised it three times, we've held interviews, but nobody has accepted the job because of the pay scale that we, that we have. So that's, that's been a struggle for us. And our apprentice program that Dr. Golson is championing is going to help us with that issue, but that, that is a concern because a plumber, a licensed plumber makes $40 an hour, and our starting salary is $26 an hour. And it's, it, no matter, our, our benefits are great, but it's very difficult to get someone to take that type of a pay cut to come here.
What, what about in the air conditioning? How many vacancies do you have on the AC side?
Currently, we may have one because someone just retired, but I don't think we have any vacancies on the HVAC side.
So do you need more staff?
We could use more staff, and we're working on that. We just finished, Dr. Golson just finished a reorganization to help us move in that direction. And once we get that in place, then we're going to look to see if we could supplement the, the staff in next year's budget.
It just seemed like this is a very basic thing, that kids walk into school with air, and in the wintertime that there's heat. And so, you know, I want to figure out how to be helpful. And if that means you need additional staff, then I think the board, knowing that, could be helpful to you. You know, I think we're willing to support that. Because at the end of the day, I feel the need to hold someone accountable, and I don't want to hold people accountable if you don't have the right staff or if there are things that are outside of your control.
And, and I appreciate the, the, your help and what you've done so far. The reality is, we have these peaks and valleys. Like, this week is the hottest week of the summer, and we happen to open school on the hottest week of the summer. So what we're doing now is we're leveraging contractors, so we're not paying for that, instead of using and having that extra staff there, we can leverage contractors to attack these, these issues. And we now have a vehicle that is in our purchasing office right now that we're going to, will have access to by the wintertime, which will give us access to more contractors. So we could, we could attack those peaks and not necessarily, because of climate change, we're getting some very extreme peaks, like what we have this week and what we had last winter, and we need to be able to put a lot of resources at those peaks.
I guess as far as a follow-up, what I would like, there, there, it's going to be hot every year, and your maintenance backlog will increase every year. So I would like some sort of creative, I don't know what, to make sure that we're not running down this path in the future, because your, your backlog will continue to increase as far, I mean, you're not going to get the $2 billion right now, we know that. So is, what do we need to do? How, how should we operate differently in order to help alleviate this problem? Something that I would like your office to kind of propose to the board. Also, for Dr. Golson, you know, I recognize that finances is a huge part of this. Money is a huge part of this, but I see my time going by so fast. I, I would like to see a, the, the cost that we need in a plan to fund our ACs and air conditioning units that the board can take to the county council, the county executive, the state delegates and senators who fight very hard for us in Annapolis, and then a governor who's willing to work with us. I mean, clearly, we have to do things differently, because if we don't, we're going to be right back here next year, and it's going to get even worse and worse as time goes on.
Thank you.
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
So I appreciate Mr. Burrows ending on that note, because ultimately, at the end of the day, as I stated earlier, we are doing a Band-Aid approach. So we have to come up with a plan that we can work with our elected officials and our governor to fund our infrastructure. Our buildings are average age of 48 years and are working on, using an AC system that was put in, in some cases, 25 years ago, and have been replaced, and no longer, those parts don't exist and can't hold to the capacity that we currently have. So in the northern part of the county where we have buildings that are extremely overcrowded, we're even taxing that facility and infrastructure. So we do, it's a, it's a bigger picture than we can hire more people, but at the same time, we have to have a compensation study completed so that we have comparable market rate. We can look at the market rate and make sure that we're able to pay people to come. Because at this point now, we have contractors who can do HVAC, but why come here when they can make more in their own business?
And Jealous is willing to work with us on that.
You good, Mr. Wallace?
I didn't have a buzz there.
You tried to. Okay. It has been properly moved and second and thoroughly discussed that the Board of Education approved items 5.1 through 5.3 under the new business agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, and items 5.1 through 5.3 under business first reader has been approved. There are no items placed under non-consent agenda this evening. So, colleagues, may I have a motion to approve actions taken in executive session on Thursday, September the 6th, 2018?
A motion second.
Thank you. It has been properly moved and second that the Board of Education hereby approves actions taken in executive session on September the 6th, 2018, and are as follows: labor negotiations, I'm sorry, that's wrong, internal audit updates, personnel appointments, administrative matters. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The action taken in executive session on September the 6th, 2018 are confirmed. Motion to adjourn. Colleagues, may I have a motion? May I have a second? It has been properly moved and second that the September the 6th, 2018 board meeting be adjourned. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The September 6th, 2018 board meeting is adjourned at 8:00, 9:00, 10:00 PM. And thank you for coming out today. Thank you.